Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the Sussex County Commissioner Meeting of July 27, 2022, at 6:00 PM here at the Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Terry to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Director Pisano?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Commissioner Yardley?
Here.
Thank you. For our moment of silence this evening, we'd like to especially recognize Eleanor Riley, Sussex County Outreach Coordinator, and Timothy McCade from the Board of Elections. We'd like to ask for you to please rise with us for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 5, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item five on the agenda is our approval of the agenda, and I did just want to note one addition. For executive session, under exemption number eight, we will be adding matters related to the employment relationship to our executive session agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda is our proclamation certificates and presentations. Our first presentation, Emily Kincaid, was not able to attend today. Do we have Patrick here? I don't see Patrick here, so we'll hold on that for now, Terry. Does that sound right? You cool with that, Herb? Okay. We'll hold on that. Of course, we wish them all the best and congratulations on what they're doing. We also have a proclamation recognizing the Eagle Scout recipient of Gregory Smith from Hopeakong. I had the opportunity to attend that ceremony and present Greg with his Eagle Scout proclamation from the board. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the proclamations for this evening?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight, so item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for our first public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? And the floor is now open for our first public session regarding agenda items only. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Item nine is our commissioner comments this evening, and as always, we'll start to my left with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. The first update is the Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center update, also known as Andover Sub Aqu. Atlantic Health continues to manage the daily operations of the Woodlands Behavioral and Nursing Center and assists in resident placements to other facilities. To date, most of the residents have been successfully transmitted, uh, transitioned to various facilities throughout the state. Currently, there are 55 residents in the facility, with nine residents from New Jersey and 46 residents from New York State. Discharge plans continue to be created for the remaining residents. Job placement assistance, guidance on filing for unemployment, and career support continues to be offered to the staff currently at Woodland until the facility closes. Staff there have been connected to multiple facilities for employment opportunities through the local employment and training services. The facility is expected to close on August 8, 2022, pending the last resident placement. And I'm very happy to see that this is finally ending and these residents are getting moved to a better facility where they'll have better treatment, and I hope all the staff finds new jobs, but I'm glad to see that they are getting the assistance that they need. And like I said in the last meeting, I did attend a Zoom that these employees were on and got to hear for myself firsthand what the state was doing with them, which I thought was great. New Jersey State Fair, Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta, Friday, August 5 through Saturday, August 13. The Divisions of Health, Senior Services, Social Services, Community and Youth Services, and Transit will be represented in the county building at the New Jersey State Fair. Booth displays and special events will be provided to benefit Sussex County residents. Skyland's Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Individuals in need can call 973-579-0480. Senior Day at the Fair will be Thursday, August 11, from 9 until 12:30, in the Performing Arts Tent at the fairgrounds. The theme this year is Hawaiian Luau, showcasing music from the Hawaiian Islands along with other entertaining tunes for our Sussex County seniors. The Senior of the Year presentation will take place at 10:30 AM, which recognizes seniors in Sussex County who have been nominated for their accomplishments and outstanding service to their community. Transit Safety Awards will also be presented to Skyland's Ride Omnibus Operators in recognition of their safe driving and the number of years they have been accident-free. Children's Day will be Tuesday, August 9, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Performing Arts Tent. The Division of Health Office Mosquito Control will educate children about mosquito biology and mosquito fish control methods through the hands-on activity of dipping for mosquito larvae from a kiddie pool and feeding mosquito fish mosquito larvae. Division of Health Office of Public Health Nursing, the Office of Public Health Nursing will be attending to promote the services available through Special Child Health Services. Division of Community and Youth Services and Detention Alternative Staff will provide kits and help children make friendship bracelets in the county colors. Staff will provide parents and guardians with information about programs and services. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I will start with the Department of Health updates again. Each meeting I share that the county continues to offer COVID-19 vaccinations. Available vaccines are first, second, and third doses, boosters, and these are the following clinics. Liberty Towers on Wednesday, August 17, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and the Health Division Office of Public Health Nursing in Hamburg on Wednesday, August 24, from 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM. The office is still providing weekly homebound vaccinations as well. If you are interested, please visit our website for contact information. The free at-home COVID-19 test kits continue to be offered on our website through Vault Medical Services and LabCorp. The most recent Department of Health COVID activity level across the entire state is coded orange, which is deemed high. The county has been reporting on average about 65 cases per day. Hospitalizations are a bit down. I know we haven't finished our month yet. In July, we report 25 hospitalizations; in June, there were 49; and in May, 48. Variants are about 95% Omicron is what is being reported. Now, to move on to the Division of Health Office of Mosquito Control. Over the last two weeks, aerial applications for mosquito larvae were conducted within Newton, Hampton, Andover, and Lafayette Township to combat vector populations and above-average populations of the cattail mosquito. Twenty samples a week are tested for viruses that are passed by mosquitoes, and the good news is there has been zero detection of disease in any of those samples that have been tested. Sussex County was recognized last week by the State Health Department Infectious Disease Program for outstanding performance in mosquito disease sampling. We were also rated top in the state surveillance program for mosquito disease testing, specifically in the selection of vector species for the Jamestown Canyon virus and for the weekly submission of lacrosse encephalitis samples as well. Also, so you are aware, in the county building, the Division of Health Office of Public Health Nursing is going to staff a booth at the fair from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, from Monday, August 8 through Thursday, the 11th, so those weekdays to educate the public. So just know that you can pop in and see them there. So that's it from the Health Department. One other thing that I wanted to share with you regarding the fair that is upcoming is the Horse Show. I know we've moved to the New Jersey State Fair, but some of us still like our traditions when it was the Farm and Horse Show. Jumper riders have the opportunity to put in their entries for a $1,500 mini-pre or a $5,000 memorial. It's being held at the Sussex County A-rated Horse Show on Friday, August 12. You do have to enter and register by the 3rd of August. So there's a prize list and stall request forms that can be found on the Farm and Horse Show website at sussexcountyfairgrounds.org. Also, we have some upcoming information from the Sussex County Clear Program. They have three different activities that are coming up. There's a quit smoking and vaping class at the Sussex County Recovery Community Center, and that's offered by Tobacco-Free-for-Healthy New Jersey and Newton Medical Center, Thursday starting August 4 at 5:00 PM. You can email Elise at centerforprevention.org or visit the website at centerforprevention.org. There is also Narcan Training at the Sussex County Recovery Community Center on Friday, August 5 at noon, and there is a Hepatitis C Clinic at the Center for Prevention and Counseling on Tuesday, August 16. So again, please visit our county website where all that information may be found. Last, I would like to wish you all a Happy National New Jersey Day. Whether you think it's a made-up Hallmark holiday or not, every single state has a happy day, and this happens to be ours, the 27th of June. It has no national significance whatsoever, and it's not the day we ratified our state constitution, but for some reason, it's our national day, so we're going to run with it. What we can say is that often in the Northwest, we're looked at as the other Jersey, but we're really proud of what we offer here, our lakes, our streams, our mountains, our trails, our farmland. And that kind of leads me to my final point. I don't have a formal update from District 24 for this meeting. Next meeting, I'll have a comprehensive update from that office. However, what I would like to say is I've noticed many people discussing that they've received their tax bills. I happen to be one of them that received my tax bill, and it's a bit appalling when you think about the rapid rise in what our taxes have been. A classmate of mine today shared with me that she lives in the borough of Hamburg, and she, I believe, lives on maybe a lot, 100 by 150, has under 1,500-square-foot house, and her annual taxes are 10 grand a year. I myself got my tax bill today. I live under 1,500 square feet, on .2 acres, and mine is about $8,000 a year, and that's what came today. And I can tell you that the lion's share of my taxes are not municipal taxes, and they are not county taxes. What they are is state taxes for schools. And they, it falls, New Jersey has a very, very dysfunctional school funding formula that we are all aware of. You almost need a doctorate to even comprehend it, or the people who wrote it needed a doctorate before writing it because it is the hottest of messes. Now, what's incredibly frustrating is that New Jersey was reported to have a $9 billion surplus in tax over collections. So the Republicans this year in Trenton put forth a plan that was to give $1 billion of property tax relief by reversing Governor Murphy's proposed cuts to municipal and school aid and fully funding our schools and not punishing rural schools because, again, we do know the former Abbott districts, those 31 school districts, still receive extraordinary aid, and we receive very little to make up for the fact for our rural areas where our development is limited. We get very little back for preserving the beauty of our state. Unfortunately, the Democrats did not listen, and Trenton did not even give any credence whatsoever to the Republican plan and the proposal to return $1 billion to the taxpayers immediately in the state of New Jersey. So again, we continue to feel the sting of pork projects and nonsense directly out of Trenton in the current administration. So I will have more information for you on that. I apologize again because I encourage you to take a look at your tax bill, see exactly where your taxes are coming from, and I would all but guarantee that the lion's share more than half of your tax bill is 100% school taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley?
Oh, thank you. Well, I hope everyone's enjoying their summer, and for those of you that are saying you're tired of the hot weather, it's okay. Winter will be here soon enough, and we can talk about how cold it is across the oil. So Sussex County will have its ninth annual Veterans Picnic on Saturday, August 20, from 12 to 2:00 PM. The Division of Senior Services Municipal Alliance and the Veterans Committee will host the Ninth Annual Veterans Picnic on Saturday, August 20, from 12 to 2:00 PM, at the American Legion Post 213, located at 915 Route 23 North in Sussex. It will include live music, giveaways, tables, veteran service, and homemade barbecue. Sounds good. It's a great program. Pre-registration is required by August 12. For additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services, 973-579-055, extension 1221. And if you know anyone or you know any people that, veterans, that aren't aware of this, please let them know. I'm sure they would appreciate it and would enjoy attending. There's also the New Jersey State Fair, Division of Senior Services sponsoring the New Jersey State Fair Tribute to the Troops Quilts of Valor, Wednesday, August 10, 2022, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And Director Lorraine Hens will be conducting a presentation during the Tribute to the Troops, and hello, Lorraine, out there. Quilts of Valor program about the veteran services, available to the Division of Senior Services. The event takes place at the Performing Arts Tent on Wednesday, August 10, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I also have, let's see here, oh, one other thing. Meeting with our county historian, and he reports that there was a call for applications on the historian website. These are for the following categories. The responses received were reviewed and evaluated by a county, group of county historians. There were seven applications, and the awards this year are Branchville Cemetery, Stillwater Arms House in Potters Field, and Walpak Flap, and they will get those plaques, you say, around the county for historic sites. There was an award for the historian for this year, the Historian of the Year, George Washington Award, and it goes to Mr. Alex Everett for his service over many years. And there will be an awards event, which will take place at the Sussex County Fair on August 6 at 5:00 PM at the county building. All are welcome, and markers for last year's winners are in, and they will be put up soon. So just to let you know, there's a lot going on, and if you have historical information or any idea, you can always go to our website and let our historian know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you, Director. I'll start off with my engineering and planning. I'll start off with some good news. Project completion is the completion of replacement signal SC-36, which was at the intersection of County Route 607, Crescent Road, and Lakeside Boulevard in Hopeakong. This was achieved on July 20. The amount was $449,042.30, which is not a cheap point. Another bridge that we're doing, Bridge S-26, carrying Stillwater Road over Swartwood Creek. County will be conducting geotechnical soil borings at Bridge S-26 on County Route 521, Stillwater Road in Stillwater Township, beginning on or about Thursday, August 4. Borings will commence following completion of the Bridge. S-25 geotechnical operation are expected to take three working days to complete. Stillwater Road will remain open to traffic as Bridge 26 during the geotechnical investigation, utilizing a single-lane alternating traffic-flagging operation between the hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Schedule is subject to change due to weather conditions and unseen circumstances. I'll go over a little bit what we're doing with the NJTPA, New Jersey Transit Planning Authority. We have meetings usually once a month, and some FIC are freight initiative as well. So the NJTPA Board of Trustees at our July 11 meeting approved amendment to the fiscal year 2022 through 2025 tip to add federal funding to pavement preservation program as requested by the NJDOT. This was an additional $50.1 million and included a repraving project at Interstate 80 from County Route 613 through Route 46 in Morris, Sussex, and Warren Counties in the amount of $10.8 million. This was made possible by the additional federal funding provided in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. The NJTPA Board of Trustees at our July 11 meeting approved amendment to our fiscal year 2022 to 25 tip to advance a Route 15 bridge over the Palmskill River in Lafayette from fiscal year 2028 to 2023. Something's wrong there. That's not right. The funding source will change the National Highway Performance Program to build formula funding in the amount of $8.45 million for the construction phase of the project. Route 23 Safety Improvement Project in Hardison, which if you take Route 23, it's been going on for a while, continues to be constructed on schedule. The NJTPA Freight Initiatives Committee, which is the FIC, heard a presentation after a meeting on June 21 on the state of the trucking industry, which continues to experience a severe shortage of truck drivers as well increasing costs due to rising fuel costs. Hence why it takes forever to get what you're looking for. This should provide good employment opportunities for graduates of the Sussex County Community College's CDL courses. The design phase of the Roseville Tunnel on Alakawana Cut-off should be getting underway soon since the NJ Transit awarded the contract for the project at their April 13, 2022 board meeting. Also, note that the commissioners will be asked to consider resolution of support for the proposed Amtrak project from New York City to SkratnPA over the Alakawana Cut through Sussex and Warren Counties at our August meeting, as well as supporting an expression of interest letter to NJ Transit to the Federal Railroad Administration, which was initiated by Congressman Cartwright's office. Alakawana Cut, as I've talked about time and time again, it's a major transportation system from Sussex County to New York. Last week, I think it was Monday, I had Christina Marks meet with a vendor, which was called Plug and Go. So Plug and Go is electric vehicle service equipment, operator, owner, based in New Jersey that specializes in EV charging infrastructure, site development, and construction for Level 2 or 3 stations. To put this in perspective, a Level 1 charging station is basically for a homeowner. This takes approximately 12 hours to fully charge an EV. Level 2 takes about 3 to 4 hours to fully charge. Plug and Go funds the entire project based on grants they are able to receive from the state of New Jersey and owns and operates the charging stations for term of the agreement. In addition, the company reimburses the partner for cost of the electricity used. The company is fully insured and will provide a certificate of insurance during the agreement phase. There's also a possibility of revenue sharing as a negotiated term of the agreement. This process takes approximately 3 to 6 months from start to finish. That's your site development, your engineering, construction, and installation. This project could help bring more attention to Sussex County for tourism, visitors as people transition to more electric vehicles. Obviously, we don't have many around here. I think the nearest one, well, the only one, is a Tesla charging station at our New Wawa on 206 in Frankfurt. So there's nothing from Rockaway to New York. I think this would help, you know? So basically, what they're looking for, they want to do a presentation. So if you guys were all accepting to that, let them come in, let them speak, and go from there. I think it's a good idea. Again, whether you believe in EV or not, that's not the point. I think it's a point of come to Sussex, I could stop here, maybe go get something to eat, and so on and so forth. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. I will keep my report brief tonight. I wanted to start by sharing that Sussex County and its approach to COVID-19 has been an evolving process from the very beginning, and that continues today. We heard from a few commissioners this evening about the latest when it comes to COVID. That's been the case at all of our meetings. The Sussex County Division of Health, kind of the next step of our transition, will no longer be issuing daily COVID-19 reports. However, the Sussex County Division of Health will be issuing weekly COVID-19 reports, and this is subject to change as the COVID-19 situation in Sussex County changes as it has and as it will continue to. But I did just want to take a moment to thank the Sussex County Division of Health for their continued work and commitment to the health and safety of Sussex County and its residents. It is tremendously appreciated. I also wanted to give just a quick report on what's happening here at this beautiful campus at Sussex County Community College. From an enrollment standpoint, applications are up over the last year, and enrollment is projected to be up above the 2019 number. That is an important metric for Sussex County Community College. That is a before-COVID number. The automobile program here received a generous donation from a regional Toyota Training Center consisting of a trailer load of brand-new 2022 engines and transmissions, having a massive impact on the automotive program here and the equipment that it's working on. Chef Kestner, who also serves as the culinary supervisor here, has been working to prepare the McGuire Culinary Institute by setting up equipment, working with other chefs, and preparing the facility and students for what's about to come, and I can't wait to see it and eat it. Athletics continue to be a very popular program here, and we welcome five new coaches in men's soccer, women's soccer, wrestling, women's basketball, and women's volleyball. Football continues to be one of the most popular extracurricular programs here with a projected roster of over 100 students for the upcoming season. That is a big team. We wish them all, all of our athletic programs, our new coaches, our student athletes, all the best. We'll be here rooting for them as they go into a new season and a new semester. I would be remiss, it's been talked about a few times already, not to bring up the Sussex County Fair and just simply saying it's the coolest event that Sussex County has to offer, and you should go there at some point because you won't regret it. So that's all my, for my comments. We had, before we moved to item 10 on our agenda, I don't want to call, are you Patrick by any chance? You are Patrick.
I'm Patrick.
Welcome, Patrick. We're so happy to have you here because we have something for you. The board already voted on it, but that was the formality part. Let's do the presentation piece, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Yardley if he can please present Patrick with the AnJack Foundation 2022 Scholarship.
Why don't we have Patrick come on up here?
Do you want to come up over here?
I'll read some of the information.
Why don't we go on this side? By that microphone right over there.
We have a microphone.
Just watch your step.
I was glad, I'm really glad you're here for this award. This is the New Jersey Associate Counties International Scholarship Award. Recipient is Patrick Babich. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's Sussex County Technical School we're going right now.
Yes.
And here are some of the recommendations that were written on behalf of Patrick by Superintendent Gus Madra. And Patrick's interest in electronics started early in life. He would disassemble old and discarded electronics and try to examine how they operated. Outside of schoolwork, Patrick started to learn about mobile phones and smartphones. You know, maybe you can give me some tips on that? How to, how to, they work? During the summer between junior and senior year, Patrick spent most of his time obtaining multiple Apple phones and repair certifications. He completed all levels needed to service all versions of the iPhone. Within those months, he was able to successfully complete his first cell phone repair on his own. Patrick's ultimate goal is to focus and obtain a degree in electronics engineering. Patrick is a metro, metroto, um, what's that? How do you pronounce that? Metrotonics? Mechatronics? Metrotronics? Metrotronics and robotic. Metrotronics and robotics CTE program, and is currently enrolled in Sussex County Community College for the upcoming 2022 fall semester. He is planning to complete all of his foundation classes required before transferring to a four-year college. A college or university, Sussex County Community College, intended program to study electronic engineering. And I am proud to present you with a check, which I put on here so it would not come off. And a certificate. I just want to take a look at that. And it's from the New Jersey Association Foundation International 2022 Scholarship Program Award presented to Patrick Babich in recognition for your dedication to academic excellence and distinguished scholastic achievement from John G. Donato Esquire, New Jersey Association Executive Director. Congratulations.
Sure. Okay. No? Okay. Yes, where would you like us to?
I'm sorry, it was my, thank you.
Okay, let me just take this. This. You can just.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Patrick.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on with our agenda. We're going to move to item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. Do we have any motions for items A through F? Commissioner Carney moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Item 11 on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. For this approval, we are actually going to hold and table the executive session minutes as that is not yet ready. That will be on our next meeting before today. Is there a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes from July 13th?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 12, we have no appointments and/or resignations today. Item 13 is our resolutions portion. Do we have any motions for resolutions A through K?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 14 on our agenda is our awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 14 on our agenda is our awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 15B on our agenda is an introduction for first reading for ordinance 2209. We need a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading, and also post a stamp on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with the notice of public hearings stating that a hearing will be held on August 10th at 6:00 p.m. prior to final adoption of this ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion?
Are you going to read the ordinance?
Sure. This is a capital ordinance providing for improvements to various bridges in and for the County of Sussex in the state of New Jersey and appropriating $2,059,133 there for, $2,059,133 from grants received or expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation Trust Fund to pay for the cost thereof. We have a motion and a second? We need a second, right?
So moved.
No.
There was a second? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We're in discussion right now. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to just make note in the reason why I asked to have it read because, again, it's very sizable, and it's a grant from, you know, directly from the Transportation Trust Fund.
Yeah.
So we are fortunate for that. That is not the money that the county is directly laying out.
Absolutely. It's a big deal. Any further discussion? Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 16, our personnel portion, we have none. Item 17, our administrative report.
Your report, Steve.
You got it. Item 18, county council report. Anything from you, Mr. Steinhardt?
Nothing public. I do have a question for you, though. Being told that here is a note from Christina, 13L, road closure. She said she didn't have the L. Seems to be taken off the list because it wasn't ready yet. This was the message I got. This was listed. 13, 13K, L, this one. Or you don't have it on, it's on this issue. You don't have any others. Make sure there was another 13L.
Okay. Correct?
It is stopping. Here, there's an L. This is why.
Yeah.
Okay, you're sure.
Yeah.
It's on mine as well.
Okay, that's fine. It's, that's fine.
Terry, can we clarify for the record that under item 13, there were only items A through K?
A through L, you mean?
No, A through K.
I have L.
That's why I'm saying there's a problem. So that's what I was now looking at you like that for.
Yes. You said A through L, which is what we voted on.
I said A through K.
You said through K.
I said through K because my agenda shows through K.
This has a K, this one has an L.
I'm sorry, you said A through K. We have an L that is blank. So there's nothing listed under it. There's just the letter that says title only, but it doesn't exist.
Since we voted on them in bulk, I want to just make sure what the Commissioners were voting on.
I thought I heard through K.
K.
You said, I'm sorry, you said A through K, but L is on the agenda, resolution title only.
Which I don't see.
You don't have it on your final?
I don't have it on mine. So it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
What we voted on was correct.
Is, there's no L in the public's agenda?
No, there isn't.
All right. So the agenda that they have has an L on it, too.
Okay, so I should clarify that?
Let's clarify.
Yes.
Go back and redo 13, please.
Well, are we?
Well, there's a motion, the public may be under the impression that there's an item L, road closure, title only, and I don't know what they think we voted on. As long as the record's clear and Commissioners are clear that they thought they were voting on A through K and not A through L, then I'm fine with it.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Does there need to be a road closure?
It's not ready yet. There's a bunch of issues with it anyway.
No. So we're okay.
All right. That's what I believe, that was A through K.
A through K.
That's why I was kind of looking at, that's why I was looking at you like you missed L. That's why.
We're all good. Thank you very much. I'm glad we have all these safeguards in place. Thank you, County.
What happened was that was supposed to be that our agenda meeting was later than told.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, probably got a tag along.
It happens.
And a draft that got out there.
No problem.
I do apologize if that's not happening.
No problem.
So the public's clear item 13 was A through K. There was no item L, no road closure at this time.
That's right. No road closure at this time.
Thank you.
All that for a road closure.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem at all. Item 19, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Item 20, any new business this evening?
I don't know if it qualifies as new business or unfinished business, but it kind of straddles. A few years ago, when the college had proposed a football team, there was a lot of blowback. A lot of people said that it would not work, and I had a meeting cited the fact that the one community college in the state that showed increased enrollment was one of the county colleges in South Jersey that actually did have a football team. And I can say with great certainty that our college here was not wrong. It was smart. It boosted enrollment. It boosted morale, and it will bring funds into this institution. So I think it was a smart decision, and I'm glad that the board supported it at that time.
Me, too.
And I just want to echo off of that real quick. I did meet with President Connolly on Monday. He told me it was 150 football players.
I have more than 100.
Yeah, and that is just crazy when you're going to fill probably a roster of 53, I would guess. Maybe college would be a little different.
Well, not the NFL.
Understood, but that's a lot. And besides him bringing in, you know, the football, we had the baseball, but having lacrosse and wrestling in a county that thrives in wrestling, state champions of my alma mater, a nephew being a three-time state champion, it's just nice that these kids have an opportunity to go somewhere, not sure what they want to do at a lower cost than, you know, a D1 school or D2 school. So it is nice. I think he does a very good job.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move to item 21 on our agenda, which is our second and final public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less for non-agenda topics. When you arrive at the microphone, please line up and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees and state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. And the floor is now open for our second public comment of the evening. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries, and the floor is now open for our second public comment of the evening. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Item 22, our reminder is always is to please, please, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules, the latest updates, and everything you need to know here in Sussex County. And for item 23, I will ask Terry to please read our executive session resolution for the evening.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as item 8, matters relating to the employment relationship, Sussex County Agricultural Board personnel. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the subject interests will know, the public interests will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall
Not.
Not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. Rather, it will adjourn its meeting immediately from executive session.
Thank you so much, Terry. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session this evening?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. Thank you much, thank you so much, everybody, for coming. Get home safe. Thank you. See you at the fair.